Okay, uh, let's see, we got seven o'clock, we got seven o'clock. Uh, the regular meet, nineteenth regular meeting in the Memphis City Council will not come to order. Clerk Herdabees, please call the roll.
Counselor Bears.
Present.
Vice President Caraviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Drew.
Counselor Marks.
Present.
Counselor Morell.
Present.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Present.
President Falco.
Present, all seven members are present. At this point in time, I would ask everyone to please rise to salute the flag. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you.
Will you suspend the rules, Mr. President?
Uh, I, I just have to read the, uh, the message from the governor. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen, in the governor, the governor's March fifteen, two thousand twenty order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting in the Memphis City Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the city of Memphis website at www.medfordma.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by accessing the meeting link contained herein. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately accept, access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the city of Memphis or Memphis Community Media website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. On the motion of Counselor Knight, seconded by Vice President Caraviallo to suspend the rules. Clerk Herdabees, please call the roll.
Counselor Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caraviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Morell.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yeah, seventy affirmative, zero on the negative, the rules are suspended, Counselor Knight.
I'm hoping to take paper two zero three nine eight out of order, Mr. President. It's a request for a transfer of eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from our leak detection accounts to some special projects related to water sewer.
Thank you, Counselor Knight. Communications from the mayor, two zero dash three nine eight to the Honorable President and members of the Memphis City Council, City Hall, Memphis, Massachusetts, zero two one five five. Dear Mr. President and City Councilors, I respectfully request and recommend that your honorable body reprograms surplus proceeds in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the leak detection system project to the following capital projects. Uh, hydraulic study drainage system design and pipelining, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Water meters project, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Hydrants project, seventy thousand dollars. Reading devices project, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, DPW Commissioner Brian Carrance and Finance Director Alicia Nunley Benjamin, uh, present to answer any of the council, councilors' questions regarding this matter. Sincerely, Brianna Alango, current mayor. Uh, let's see, we have Alicia Nunley with us. I'm going to unmute her, and we have Brian Carrance. Uh, Brian, would you like to speak about the, uh, talk about the project a little bit?
Sure, uh, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, and members of the council. Uh, the paper that the mayor has forwarded to you for your consideration um, is for water-related uh, maintenance issues, as I would call it, uh, within DPW. Um, as you're well aware, uh, your DPW manages and maintains the uh, domestic water service for the entire city. In addition, okay, the uh, domestic sewage uh, as well. And uh, just to give you a snapshot, as far as water is concerned and the domestic water service, we have a hundred and forty-four miles of pipe underground uh, that we have to maintain. In addition to that, a hundred and nineteen miles is for sewer mains. Uh, that has nothing to do with the stormwater, okay? This is just what services, the commercial properties, and also the residential properties. Uh, okay, the first paper, though, uh, has to do with drainage, uh, is Bowen Avenue. Bowen Ave uh, is between Main Street and Mystic Avenue. Um, and there's been, uh, for several years now, uh, an ongoing issue with uh, uh flooding, uh, when particularly when we have heavy rains. Uh, now, uh, we've been out there numerous times, uh, with, you know, the internal forces to make sure the lines are clear and everything else. Um, and basically, that neighborhood, starting with Bowen, alright, we feel is a capacity problem, alright? And what we would like to do, subject to your approval, alright, is to get a company in to actually do a study of the stormwater system in that entire neighborhood. Keep in mind, all of the stormwater for the city, the entire, uh, seven miles, it all goes into the Mystic River in some way, shape, or form. In addition to that, coming through our city is Winchester, Stoneham, Malden, Somerville. So it just further compounds it. Now, Somerville would be coming down in that general area in addition to the waters, alright, that we have gone through ourselves. And what we want to do is try to uh, uh, figure out exactly what is actually needed in that neighborhood, starting with Bowen, uh, to try to alleviate the flooding that's, uh, taking place there, um, that, you know, is, uh, you know, damaging, you know, from people's lawns, driveways, and everything else. Uh, the second request that you have, okay, is, and I'll, I'll just sandwich it together, is for uh, water meters and the reading devices. Now, the reading devices are, uh, the heads of water meters. And what we, uh, keep in mind, the uh, metering system for the city was installed in two thousand five, two thousand six for all the residential and all of the uh, uh, commercial meters in the city. Again, DPW manages and monitors usage and consumption for anybody, alright, who has water and sewer, uh, services in the city. The actual number of meters, and they vary in size, five eighths inch to an inch is your standard size for homes, and they go up to ten inches in diameter, which would be for large, uh, commercial properties and like the hotel and all that, alright? We manage, okay, fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-five meters, uh, in the city. Okay, and alright, what's happening is over time, alright, uh, they're showing their wear. And uh, you, what's happening is, you know, a lot of them are starting to lose their accuracy as far as what the actual kind of consumption is, alright? By either replacing heads or replacing the meters in their entirety, alright? That way, you would give a true accurate figure, but not only the customer, but also the city to properly build, alright, what, you know, people are actually using. The last, uh, request is for hydrants. Uh, again, alright, DPW manages, maintains, and repairs and replaces the hydrants in the city, alright? We have over thirteen hundred, um, uh, hydrants, uh, that we have to maintain. And again, over time, they show their age and the, and their wear, uh, and, you know, sometimes we can rebuild them, uh, by replacing the shafts or the stems internally. Uh, other times, it is just, you know, worn out, uh, deteriorated due, due to age and everything. So this is just a continuation, a yearly, as far as replacing so many, uh, hydrants uh, within the city to make sure that we have, uh, adequate, uh, you know, water for fire suppression in the event, uh, the need arises.
Thank you, Commissioner Carrance. Uh, we have a number of questions from the council. We'll start off with Counselor Marks, Counselor Marks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Alicia and, uh, Mr. Carrance for being on the call tonight. Um, the, these are all, in my opinion, very worthy projects. Uh, any, anyone that's been on the council for a number of years knows Bowen Ave and that area has been, uh, a real concern for flooding over many years. Uh, when there's heavy rains, you better take your canoe out to traverse some of those streets. That's how bad it gets, that's no exaggeration. And the homeowners have been putting up with this for a number of years, and I hope this study leads to, uh, improvements to drainage and other infrastructure improvements in that particular area. Uh, the water meters, uh, my question, uh, I was on the council when we voted for water meters back in two thousand and five. So I remember the nightmare prior to two thousand and five, when we had a system that we used to estimate probably half the city. And as you know, when you get an estimated bill, it's not a true, uh, rendering of what you use for water, and you can imagine, uh, people paying bills that, uh, for consumption that they didn't use. So it was a nightmare, there were, uh, a lot of, uh, uh, abatements going on at the time, and, uh, it was, it was, uh, just a real bad time for the city. Um, Brian, what is the life expectancy of the current meters that were put in two thousand and five?
They start to, uh, lose their, uh, uh, calibration, is, uh, I'd call it, my, after about eleven years, once they start reaching eleven years old and beyond that, alright, the calibration can, you know, goes down. And, uh, goes down to where it could benefit us, but it also could benefit the consumer. Uh, and you really can't get a true accurate picture. And then eventually, alright, they end up, just, they just stop working. And that's when you have to get into, you know, estimating a bill for somebody. Uh, by, you know, replacing either the heads if they want out, or the entire meters, uh, themselves, Mike, alright? That way, we can stay on top of it and give everybody, you know, a true accurate bill each month.
Right, thi- this may not, this may be, uh, a question for Ron in the water department, but, um, I'm gonna ask it anyways. Uh, what, what percent right now are we estimating, if any?
Alright, okay, the, as far as, alright, the numbers of, uh, businesses or residents that are out there as far as estimate, I'd have to get you that actual, uh, you know, number, uh, Mike, alright? Uh, there are people out there, uh, but you mean, you're not talking hundreds and hundreds, but there are, uh, people out there that were giving, uh, you know, estimated bills to.
Okay, and the plan for this money is not to stock on around, uh, and systematically replace everyone's meter, which, uh, they're, they're now fifteen years old. It's just to have them, so if a meter does start to malfunction, you're gonna have the ability to replace the head or replace the entire meter?
Uh, actually, both, uh, Mike, it's obviously to keep some on the shelf, uh, i- if you would. Uh, but we also do have, uh, meters out there that their, uh, you know, accuracy is just beyond approach, that we, if the money was approved and we did acquire these, we'd, uh, replace them, uh, right away.
Right, so, uh, Mr. President, if I could, uh, just, um, uh, amend this, if I could, or, uh, have a request to the city administration that we get an update on, uh, the, uh, remetering. We're, we're fifteen years into a life expectancy of roughly ten to eleven years. Um, and we definitely don't want to go back to the days where we were estimating half our city. It created a lot of problems. There were residents that were over and underpaying. There were residents that get, were getting catch-up bills, uh, if councilors remember, of two, three, four, five thousand dollars, a catch-up bill, uh, that the city finally figured out that the resident wasn't paying enough over the last several years. And we definitely don't want to go back, uh, to that period of time. So I would ask that we look at, uh, the remetering of the city, uh, Mr. President, which is a, a larger endeavor, but I think something we should be proactive about. And my, my last question to Mr. Carrance, uh, is, I, I, I think all these particular uses, hydrants, so forth, are great. I have to put in a plug for catch basins. I still see, Brian, I don't have to tell you this, I know I'm preaching to the choir, there are still hundreds of catch basins around the city that are sunken in and, uh, pose a danger to, uh, residents, uh, and also, uh, are not serving as the function that they're supposed to, to cut off rain runoff water because they're sunk in and they're not doing their purpose. They're not capturing this water and cutting it out to the Mystic River. So I need to put a plug in for some additional funding for catch basin, uh, maintenance, repair, um, and replacement, um, as well as this paper, Mr. President. So I would offer those two suggestions, that the administration report back on a meter replacement plan, and also, uh, what, uh, the plan is for repairing or replacing our catch basins that currently exist, are ones that are, uh, broken and caving in throughout the community.
Thank you, Counselor Marks. Clerk Herdabees, do you have the, uh, the wording to the amendments?
I have the first one, I'm still working on the second one.
So after, uh, we get the wording, uh, we have Counselor Bears, then Vice President Caraviallo, then Counselor Knight, so, uh, which one?
Let me read, let me read back what I have. Um, the first amendment is a request to the city administration that the council get an update on the remetering, the remetering of the city. Is that correct, Counselor Marks?
That's, that's correct.
And then the second one is the, uh, is requesting an update on the plan for repairing or replacing catch basins throughout the city.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, great, that's good. Thank you, Counselor Marks, thank you, Clerk Herdabees. Uh, let's see, we have Counselor Bears.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm really glad to see you. Director Nunley Benjamin and, and Brian, thank you for being here. Um, uh, Brian, I just had one question. People in the Bowen Ave area are talking all the time about the flooding. Um, it's a huge issue for them, quality of life issue. Um, and I was just wondering, how far will this get us, uh, in, in getting to a solution to that?
Okay, uh, okay, I apologize, uh, Counselor, uh, I got, uh, cut off. I'm actually losing, uh, using, uh, the clerk's, uh, computer as we speak. Uh, okay, as far as, I, okay, the, as far as the, the examination, the design, and the recommendations, alright, would take us, basically, the immediate streets, including Bowen. I mean, we're gonna start with Bowen and branch out. Um, between, uh, the institutional knowledge of several of our engineers, as well as the highway maintenance people, we feel we know how far we have to go. So, I mean, we've done our homework as best we can, but again, till you start getting underground and start cammering all of the lines that already in existence, um, you know, it's, uh, you were just giving our best guess right here.
Got it, um, and, and so, this would, you think you have the design and all of that? Would this actually get us to fixing it, or is this just analyzing and figuring out how to fix it?
Uh, probably both, uh, again, um, you know, we, we, we just, right now, again, assuming, alright, okay, the, the pocket problems, uh, in that area, alright? But till we actually get a company in, uh, and closely examine not only the, uh, condition, but also the size of the existing storm drain pipes, and just where they connect into and from, and where they go out. Um, you know, the, it's really, it's just our, our best guess. Uh, but we clearly know that there is waters that are coming in from Somerville, heading into that direction, alright? You know, how much of that is compounding the problem? Again, till we camera it, we don't know for sure.
Got it, well, I thank you for taking it up, because the residents in that area, it's a major, major issue for them. Um, and then I just had a question for Alicia, um, and, you know, I think you might have to unmute.
Yep.
Um, so, I guess my question is just, you know, I think this is, these are really important projects, but obviously, you know better than any of us that we're in, uh, tough times, um, and, and tight budgets, that we really need to do everything we can to avoid cuts. Um, is there any way that putting the funds towards these projects, which I agree are really important, could impact? Are we, are we putting money into this, and this money maybe could be used later to maintain existing services, or, or is this completely separate?
So, it's a great question. Actually, these capital costs were caught, um, cut out of the enterprise fund budget and brought before your honorable body to be reprogrammed out of an existing project that's not gonna be utilized, therefore saving money on the enterprise side. So that's the way we were kind of trying to negate some of the overages that we're seeing that's happening, we're trying to plug some deficits that we know are gonna occur. So I am, um, in the process of meeting with the Water and Sewer Commission, um, looking at the rates for next year, haven't done that yet. We're in any phase of that and working on the budget.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alicia, thank you, Counselor Bears. Counsel, Vice President Caraviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President, Alicia, good to have you back.
Thank you, Counselor.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, uh, Counselor Marks brought up an important point about, uh, all the storm drains that are failing in the city. And, uh, again, that's, that's a, I was gonna bring that to the attention also, but, um, we also have, uh, uh, a lot of manhole covers that is sinking. I think some are, some may belong to the MWRA, uh, gas company, but I think there's a, uh, multitude of them that belongs to different companies. Am I correct, Mr. Carrance?
Y- you're absolutely right, uh, Mr. Vice President. I have, uh, you know, the, the, the gas company, the electric company, uh, in some cases, I cable, um, as well as, you know, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, Medford, uh, covers as well. Um, again, to me, as far, you know, the, the, you know, arterial system, um, is aging, alright? It has been aging, and over time, alright, between, you know, the, the severe winters and, and, and heavy truck traffic, um, you know, we just, we just really can't keep up with, uh, you know, repairing what is ours. What is not ours, if we take notice of it, we'll report it to, uh, the owner, uh, whether it be the utility, kind, you know, one of the utility companies, you know, we request them to get out there as quickly as they can, uh, to repair their cupboards. But, uh, there's hundreds out there that, uh, need attention, Counselor.
And that was my question, I was seeing that, uh, right now, where, um, where traffic is on, probably on the minimal side, if we can maybe get some of those companies to get out here and, uh, and fix, uh, their stuff, you know, uh, while, while, uh, the traffic is still on the, on the, on the, on the slow side. And, uh, my next question is, um, uh, well, this is, this is coming out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise account, um, what is the, what is, what is the balance left on that?
Uh, Counselor, I believe it's about six million dollars in the earnings. Uh, this project that you're taking the money from to fund these projects right now has a nine hundred thousand dollar balance, and we're programming eight hundred and fifty-five of it.
Okay, and, uh, and one last question, um, if we, if, Alicia, I know, um, uh, a lot of times, there seems to be a question over where the, the money that's in the Water and Sewer Enterprise account comes from. Would it be possible for the Water and Sewer Commission to, uh, provide the council, uh, with a breakdown on where those funds come from, uh, in the next few weeks?
Uh, you'd have to ask the Water and Sewer Commission, they're their own separate body, but, uh, you could send me a request, and I can, I could give you a breakdown of the, uh, if you send it to the mayor's office on some.
Mr. President, if, if you could, uh, make this part, in a form of a motion to, uh, request that, uh, uh, the city council be provided a breakdown, uh, to, uh, uh, where the, the funds from the Water and Sewer Commission, uh, come from.
Second.
What, what, do you want to make that as an amendment to the paper?
Uh, yes, if you want to do that, yeah.
Okay. Uh, does Clerk Herdabees have that, or?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Caraviallo. Counselor Knight.
Um, Mr. President, thank you very much, um, I will be supporting this paper this evening. It's always good to see shovels in the ground and work getting done. Um, I'm sure that this expenditure is part of the mayor's capital plan, and, um, I'd like to offer an amendment to the paper as well. I'm asking that the mayor provide us with a copy of her capital plan.
Thank you, Counselor Knight, Clerk Herdabees, do you have the amendment?
Got it.
Okay. Counselor Roll.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, just a quick question, sorry if I missed this. Alicia, you referenced that this is coming from a program that's no longer going on. What program is that?
The leak detection system.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, the questions from the councilors. Okay, on the motion. On the main motion.
Second, Mr. President.
Okay, so, uh, Clerk Herdabees, do you have all the amendments, right?
I have all the amendments, they're all part of the main paper. I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything get called as a B paper, so you can take one vote.
Okay, perfect, so on the motion of, let's see, was it Counselor Marks to approve the paper?
Yeah.
Okay, seconded by, by Vice President Caraviallo, as amended by Counselor Marks. Vice President Caraviallo, Counselor Knight. Did he get everyone?
Yeah, Counsel, Counselor Marks had two amendments.
Is, okay, as further amended by Counselor Marks. Clerk Herdabees, please call the roll.
Counselor Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caraviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Morell.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yeah, seventy affirmative, zero on the negative, the motion passes. Thank you, Brian Carrance, thank you, Alicia Nunley Benjamin, good to see you tonight.
Thank you.
I thank you, councilors, be safe out there.
Thank you, you too, be safe and healthy. Thank you very much for being here tonight, good to see you both.
Thank you, take care.
Bye.
Motion to revert back.
Vice President Caraviallo. Excuse me?
Motion to revert back?
On the motion of Counselor Marks, seconded by Vice President Caraviallo to revert back to the regular order of business. Clerk Herdabees, please call the roll.
Counselor Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caraviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Morell.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero on the negative. We will now revert back to the regular order of business. Uh, do we have a representative from National Grid with us tonight?
I'm gonna scroll down.
Yes.
I just muted him.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Notice of a public hearing. Let's see, hearings, legal notice, two zero dash three six five, petition for grant of location, National Grid, North Andover, Massachusetts, underground electric conduits sustaining and protecting fixtures, Memphis, Massachusetts, City Clerk's Office. You are hereby notified that by order of the Memphis City Council, public hearing will be given via Zoom at seven PM on Tuesday, June second, two thousand and twenty, on a petition of National Grid Incorporated for permission to construct a line of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting features under and across the public way herein after named said underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan marked Summit Road, Memphis, Massachusetts, and filed in the office of the city clerk. Whereas it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. And underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan marked Summit Road, Memphis, Massachusetts, and available for inspection in the office of the city clerk, Memphis, Massachusetts, Memphis City Hall, uh, room one zero three eighty-five George P. Hazard Drive, Memphis, Massachusetts, zero two one five five. The fo- the following are the streets and highways referred to, plan number two nine five six eight three three one, Summit Road, National Grid to install at the intersection of Summit Road and continuing approximately five feet in a northeast direction. Install one to three-inch conduit off existing pole P one seven five two, approximately five feet towards nineteen Summit Road. Location approximately as shown on plan filed in the office of the city clerk. This was approved by the city engineer with the following conditions. The Engineering Division recommends that this grant be a, a grant of location be approved with the following conditions. Number one, the grant of location, GOL, is limited to the five feet of duct bank as described in the GOL document as follows. Install one to three-inch conduit of existing pole P one seven five two, approximately five feet towards nineteen Summit Road. Number two, before starting work, the contractor shall notify DigSafe and shall obtain all applicable permits from the Engineering Division. The project must obtain a street opening permit pursuant to section seventy-four dash one four one of the city ordinances prior to commencing work. Number three, no other utility structures, conduits, duct banks, pipes, or any other apparatuses are adversely impacted. National Grid shall ensure that all sewer water and drain lines are marked prior to the excavation. Any disturbed concrete sidewalk panels shall be replaced in kind. Asphalt must be replaced with asphalt, concrete with concrete. Number four, the sidewalk and street restoration shall be done in consultation with the Engineering Division and per the requirements of the approved street opening permit. Number five, all expansion joint shall be placed between the new concrete sidewalk panel and the, the existing driveway, approved by the superintendent of wires. It's called seventy-one, three nine three, two four two five, for any accommodations to indoor aids. That, uh, Adam L. Herdabees, City Clerk. Plans can be viewed in the City Clerk's office, seventy-one, three nine. Plans can be viewed in the City Clerk's office, 713932425. At this point in time, I would declare the public hearing open, open to those in favor of the petition.
National Grid, hi, how you doing, Mr. President?
If we could please have your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Socrates Perez, address 70 Metford Street, in Metford. In Moldan, sorry.
No worries, and you are in favor of the petition?
Yes, I am. It's just basically for, for a secondary service going into the house, 19 Summit, Summit, Summit Road.
Okay. Can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Yes, it's just for a secondary service, for their underground service going to 19 Summit Road.
Okay, thank you very much, you are in favor of the, the project?
Petition, yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, anyone else in favor that would like to speak? Anyone else in favor? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I declare this portion of the hearing closed. Anyone in opposition of the petition? Anyone in opposition? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I declare this portion of the hearing closed. See, um, let's see, so, is there any questions from the council?
Motion for approval, Mr. President.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, the motion of Vice President Caviello to approve, seconded by, is it Council Knight?
I'll share, Zach can have it, Mr. President, not a problem.
Second by Council Knight. Clerk Herdaby, please call the roll.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Council Knight.
Yes.
Council Marks.
Yes.
Council Morrell.
Yes.
Council Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seven affirmative, zero on the negative, the paper is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Motion orders and resolutions, 20-371, offered by Council Knight. Be resolved that the Metford City Council congratulate Dorothy and Frank Zizzo on a momentous celebration of their 40th wedding anniversary. Council Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I'd just like to take a brief opportunity to wish Frank and Dorothy a very happy 40th anniversary. I'd ask my council colleagues to join me in doing such. Frank and Dorothy have been fixtures down at the Conde skating rink for 25, 30 years working with Metford U Parky. They're also great neighbors up there in the hillside area on Venom Street, Mr. President. And very recently, Frank, he battled cancer very publicly and right now he has a clean bill of health and he's doing very well and he and his wife were able to celebrate their 40th wedding anniversary and here's to 40 more. So I'd ask my council colleagues to support this resolution.
Great news and congratulations to the Zizzos. On the motion of Council Knight, seconded by?
Second, Mr. President.
Seconded by Vice President Caviello. Clerk Herdaby, please call the roll.
Council Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Council Knight.
Yes.
Council Marks.
Yes.
Council Morrell.
Yes.
Council Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seven affirmative, zero on the negative, the motion passes. Congratulations to Dorothy and Frank Zizzo. 20-390, offered by Council Knight. Be resolved that the City Finance Director assign any remaining funds to the Legislative Salary Account, 0101015202, purchase of service and videographer to the council's special fund designated for zoning consultant services when presenting the end-of-year transfers. Council Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. I had the opportunity to speak with the Finance Director earlier in the month and it's been brought to my attention that we will have a surplus of funds in our videographers' account and where we're looking at bringing on a zoning consultant and the price of that zoning consultant was a little bit more than we had been allotted in the past. This is an effort for us to identify funding avenues to complete the contract. It's been brought to my attention through a correspondence from the City Clerk that we have found funding to fully fund the $47,500 for our zoning consultant, but I'd ask that this request stand, Mr. President, so that if there are any contingency fees or contingency expenses that are related to the implementation of our zoning consultant, we have some flexibility and some funds available. I ask my council colleagues to support the resolution.
Second, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Knight. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Any emails? Clerk Herdaby, Council Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, just a question for Adam, the reason for the extra funds, I guess, is there like because lack of use for ours or do we know the reason?
Um, I do believe we had budgeted for two videographers. One of our videographers took ill and has since resigned from the position or has left from the position and we had some budgeted funds in the account for that purpose, with a personnel-related expense.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. On the motion of Council Knight, seconded by Council Bears, Clerk Herdaby, please call the roll.
Council Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Council Knight.
Yes.
Council Marks.
Yes.
Council Morrell.
Yes.
Council Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seven affirmative, zero on the negative, the motion passes. 20-391, offered by Council Knight. Be resolved that the Metford City Council extends its deep and sincere condolences to the family of Michael Meehan on his recent passing. Council Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Mike Meehan was a neighborhood kid from down here in West Metford, Place DePac Rad, as we like to be called, and I recently passed away. Michael was a product of our public schools. He was also one of the founding members of the Boston Pizza Wars Facebook page, which has gained some popularity over the past several months, Mr. President. And Michael was just laid to rest this past weekend and there was quite a celebration of life for him down at Place DePac, where individuals related to that pizza group got together and did a one bite smash of pizza in honor of Mike Meehan. But Mike was a gentleman that touched a lot of lives. He was someone that's been taken from his spot too soon, Mr. President, and I'd just like to offer my condolences to his family and ask that my council colleagues do the same.
Thank you, Council Knight. At this point, I ask that we could all, please rise for a brief moment of silence. On the motion of Council Knight, seconded by Council Scarpelli, Clerk Herdaby, please call the roll.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Council Knight.
Yes.
Council Marks.
Yes.
Council Morrell.
Yes.
Council Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seven affirmative, zero on the negative, the motion passes. 20-392, offered by Council Marks. Excuse me. Be resolved that the Met, the Metford-Massport Community Advisory Committee Representatives, Peter Houck and Luke Preznar, update the city council on the recent federal aviation commitment to study runway changes as identified in the MIT study. Council Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is great news. Finally, I think we see some positive results from many thousands of complaints filed by Metford residents regarding airplane noise that started back in 2013 when Massport implemented a flight patent that unfairly and disproportionately pushed and exposed Metford residents to noise from runway 33L. And that's been a bone of contention, not just with the city of Metford, but many surrounding communities. And it was over the last couple of years that I believe Metford took some great steps under the leadership of former Mayor Burke. There was efforts to join with surrounding communities, of which we joined with Arlington, Somerville, Belmont, Watertown, requesting the FAA study, the changes that were identified in the MIT study that was commissioned. And I know under the leadership now of current mayor, Lungo Kern, we are seeing results, Mr. President. The FAA recently said that they will look at the MIT study and it'll take about two to three months and they will make recommendations based on the study of the MIT and they are committed to looking and making changes on behalf of the city of Metford. I personally want to thank, Mr. President, again, you know, because I've been around, I remember the days that we didn't have a representative that sat on this advisory commission. So when they were making decisions back in 2013 and even prior to that, Metford was not at the table to stand up and say, wait a minute, you're using Metford as a dumping ground. And I'm proud to say, Mr. President, I raised the red flag and I got a copy of the minutes back some eight years ago and I showed the general public how we had no one representing our city. And I have to say, it was Mayor McGlynn at the time, chose to put two representatives on the board, it was Peter Houck and Luke Preznar, and they've done yeoman's work in representing our community. If you've ever been to one of their presentations, they are extremely knowledgeable. I have people from surrounding communities that would like to steal them and say, how can we get them to represent our community? That's how great they are. I would only ask, Mr. President, that we be kept up to date on this June meeting that's going to take place with Massport Community Advisory Committee members as well as the FAA and that they appear at a future council meeting to give us an update to what direction we are going to move in as a community and if any resources or other things are needed, that they be able to present that to the council, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Marks. Vice President Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll echo Council Marks's support of Luke and Peter. Again, they've done a tremendous amount of work since they've come on board. I think this is also a good time to have the meeting where the plane travel is at a minimum right at the moment. So I think they can make some strides with that going forward because anything now will be adding on, so they'll know what kind of traffic will be moving up coming in the next, you know, six, seven, eight months as the, as the airline industry tries to ramp up again, get going. So I think now that, you know, it's a good time to get a handle on this where the plane travels, I mean, the plane travels at a minimum.
Thank you, Vice President Caviello. Council Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I want to thank Council Marks for bringing this forward and also echo the laudatory remarks on Peter and Luke, they're really phenomenal and are always there to answer questions. And also echo Vice President Caviello, where right now plane travel is down, so we're getting a bit of a reprieve, but now is really the time where we have to keep advancing this because, as Council Marks pointed out, Metford has been taken advantage of in the past and we don't want to let up right now. And I do have concerns, this is something we need to raise right now as well, because I have concerns that there has been stuff coming out of the FAA of smaller airports having less flights going to them, but where do those flights go instead? Do they come into Boston instead and do they go right over our Metford residents, you know, as an onslaught instead? So I'm thankful for Council Marks bringing this up and that this is moving forward and hopefully we continue to work towards a resolution that can really make stuff more equitable for the residents in the area. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Morrell. Council Bears.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I want to echo what my colleagues have said and also echo, really thank Peter and Luke for everything they've been doing. This issue's really important now, you know, we've had a little bit of a reprieve, air travel is down, but everyone is spending all their time at home now. So people are trying to work from home under this noise. I mean, it's just, it's not doable for a lot of folks and I know it's been a real stress for people, so I hope we can get their update. And then I know I'm on some email lists with folks who've been working on this. There's a meeting next week of the Massport Community Advisory Council, I think it's Massport Community Advisory Committee, CAC, where they're going to be discussing some options that Council Marks referring to. I believe it's June 11 and I know that some residents have requested that local officials try to be on that meeting if they can. Of course, it's a Zoom digital meeting, so that's just, I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Thank you, Council Bears. Okay, any other questions from the council? Council Marks, thank you for bringing this forward. This is an absolutely very important issue and we'll definitely schedule some time with Peter and Luke, who are absolutely the most knowledgeable people I know about this issue. So it's always great to listen to them and get an update. So thank you for bringing this forward. Clerk Herdaby, do you have any emails from the public on this and is there any public participation on this matter?
Mr. President, there are no emails on this topic. There are actually no emails on any agenda topic this evening.
Okay, perfect, thank you. On the motion of Council Mark, seconded by Vice President Caviello, Clerk Herdaby, please call the roll.
Council Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Council Knight.
Yes.
Council Marks.
Yes.
Council Morrell.
Yes.
Council Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seven affirmative, zero on the negative, the motion passes. 20-393, offered by Vice President Caviello. Whereas the city of Metford has appealed the decision that was granted in favor of the petitioner of the 40B project on 4,000 Mystic Valley Parkway, be resolved that the Metford City Council receive answers to the following questions from the city administration. Number one, what is the cost of the appeal and where will these funds come from? Number two, if the city of Metford is unsuccessful in its appeal, what is the next step? Number three, seeing that the state has ruled in favor of this petitioner, is it likely that the state will use the same formula and rule in favor of the other two petitioners? Will the city also be appealing these decisions? Next question, what is the plan to address affordable housing crisis as described by the mayor of the city of Metford if we deny these three 40B projects? The last question is, what is the plan to reach our affordable housing threshold in order to stop 40B projects that continue coming to Metford? Vice President Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is going to be a question coming down the line for the next year or so with the proliferation of 40B projects coming into the city of Metford until we reach our threshold. I was able to watch the meeting a couple of weeks ago when the decision came in in favor of the petitioner at 4,000 Mystic Valley Parkway. And one of the big questions was, just the, the formula that's used between the city of Metford's number and the, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts number, along with the private petitioner's numbers, we were off about 70 points, which is a huge discrepancy. So that's somewhat of a concern to me, but, so, the Board of Appeals has appealed that decision to the next level. How are we funding this appeal, Mr. President, is my first question. Is this going to cost us money? Have we hired a, a separate attorney to do this appeal? And second, we have two more petitioners right behind this one here, one being on the Fells Way where the, where the box factory is and another one being on Mystic Avenue. So I know this first project doesn't get us to our limit and maybe the next two will, but seeing that these are, I mean, is the city going to deny those? Because I don't see the state using a different formula to, on, on those two applicants any different than they did on the first one. So are we going to appeal all those or are we going to maybe try to negotiate a, some type of settlement with these people to get up to our, our, our threshold? Because again, and along with the new census coming out, our threshold may go higher. So that's something we have to keep an eye out for. But do we have any other, you know, does the administration have a plan to, for affordable housing? I mean, right now, this is the only avenue that we, we currently have for affordable housing in the city of Metford. I don't see the federal government coming forward and building any housing projects similar to what they did on Willis Avenue or Riverside Avenue. So again, now, on, on the, on the other side of this, these three projects, if the city were to embrace them in these difficult times, would probably generate, just in building fees, Mr. President, over $2 million, which would wipe out our deficit that the, the building department is currently facing with the building permits. And along with putting some boots on the ground, people working in the city of Metford. So again, this- So again, this is a discussion we have to have going forward to how do we get to our thresholds without allowing these projects to come forward? So I'll leave that up to my other counselors for discussion.
Thank you, Vice President Carviallo. Council Knight. Hang on, Council Knight, you need a moment.
There you go. Mr. President, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I appreciate Council of Carviallo for bringing this issue up. It's my understanding that 100% of the units in the 40B proposal would go towards our 10% affordability quota, even though I believe that the number of units in the actual development would be about 25 to 30% affordable. So it's my understanding, Mr. President, that because these 40B projects do bring some affordable housing into the community, that the entire development discounted towards that 10% quota. So that's something that we need to take a long, hard look at, Mr. President. And quite frankly, you know, I think it's time to negotiate. It's time to call these developers in and sit down with them and work towards coming up with a friendly 40B project that's going to be something that can benefit the community and something that can give us some sort of community impact benefit, Mr. President. So when I look at it, you know, we just lost the Safe Harbor fight and we've pretty much lost all our leverage in negotiation. So now the question comes is, you know, if we're going to get a 40B project, do we want a 40B that's friendly or do we want a 40B that's going to run us over? Are we going to fight them every step of the way? Are we going to bring them to the table and sit down and work with them? And I think that, you know, we need to call these developers into the room, Mr. President, and sit down with them and bring them to the table and talk about what concerns we have as a community and what direction we'd like to see them going. I can't thank Council of Carviallo enough for bringing this issue up. I'd like to amend the paper just to ask if these services are services that are covered under the $60,000 retainer that we've given KP law or if they are covered as à la carte services. So I would support the council's resolve this evening and thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Council Knight. Clark Curbey, do you have the amendment?
Yes, I've got the amendment. Are these services covered under the $60,000 KP law agreement or are they considered à la carte services?
You are correct. Vice President Carviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I didn't mention that the last three projects that came on board in the city of Medford, which is Rivers Edge, Modera, and the other Rivers Edge have generated close to $3 million in taxes for our city, which is a far cry more than we were getting for those properties in the state that they were. And like I said, you know, and these three projects would probably generate three to four million. So again, we're not looking at just today, Mr. President. We're looking at going down the line for the financial stability of our city. Like I said, right now, well, you know, we're in tough times and like I said, you know, just the zoning, I mean, excuse me, just the building fees are a tremendous amount of money. But again, you know, even if any of these projects were to start today, we wouldn't see any money on these probably till the next two years. And again, like I say, you know, we're going to, the problem that we have today with our budget, this isn't going to be going away anytime soon. So again, we have to look toward the future and generating more money for the city because unfortunately we are a business and we do need to make money to keep on going.
Thank you, Vice President Carviallo. Council Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Council of Carviallo for bringing this up. He brings a lot of valid points up regarding much-needed affordable housing, which I think we all can agree upon, additional revenue from building permits and so forth, which I think we all agree upon. I think the one issue, Mr. President, we do have to look at is that the fact that this law has been around for five decades. And if you look at the statistics, 80% of the communities in Massachusetts fall below the 10% threshold. So even though this law has been out there for five decades, it's done very little to add affordable housing. And I agree with my colleagues, I agree with Council Knight said, I think a friendly 40B is something we should be looking at as a community. I also think there are housing production plans that within the last two years, 150 cities and towns have taken advantage of, which is a way of creating a blueprint in a community that allows you to move forward on these larger projects that have affordability components. And those are less contentious, they're good ways of moving forward with developers in suiting the needs of a community, but also not rolling over either, Mr. President. Because, you know, if we talk about fairness, let's face it, these particular projects, 1,000 units are within a square mile of each other. You know, they're not spread around the community, Mr. President. I could just tell you, Mr. President, in my neighborhood alone, they've added hundreds, if not thousands of units in the last year and a half in one neighborhood, Mr. President. So I think when we have to take a look at this and maybe when we start looking at zoning, this will be an issue we do take a look at, Mr. President. But we have to make sure that, you know, if we're going to create these projects, especially these larger projects, that they're created fairly and evenly distributed around the community, Mr. President. I think that's vital. And those are things that I think we have to look at. So I don't fault the administration for standing up on behalf of the community and saying, these are mitigating factors we're going to be looking for, these are things that we want to safeguard neighborhoods, these are issues that we're concerned about. I don't fault them for that, but I do, would like to see a collaborative effort when the developers do come in so we can work on this and not waste money with attorneys, because the only one that gains are the attorneys making money. And, you know, so I'd like to see a collaborative effort when this happens and I'd like to see a little more thought, Mr. President, to make sure that these projects are equally dispersed. Why should one neighborhood experience thousands of more traffic trips and thousands of more cars on the street while other neighborhoods don't see anything at all, Mr. President? So, you know, if we're going to stand up and talk about fairness, we have to have the discussion, although it may be painful because people don't want to talk about it, Mr. President, but it's something that we need to discuss as a council. And I thank my colleagues for bringing this up.
Thank you, Council Marks. Council appears.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, I have a couple of comments, but I just want to say, and no personal at all question to you, Counselor Carviallo, but, you know, I agree we need to keep revenue coming in, but we are not a business in the normal sense. We, our demand goes up when times are bad. It's not a time when we can pull back, you know, it's very different. So I just wanted to put that out there. And again, nothing to you directly, Mr. Vice President, it's just.
We do need to generate money every year.
No, and I hear that.
You know, we can, we can call it whatever we want, but we, money, funds have to, you know, the tax dollars only raise X amount of dollars. So, you know, new growth is a big, a big part of our budget every year.
No, and I agree with that 100%. So my comments substantively, it's just the word business, I hear it in government, people, you know, it's just, just a personal thing. And, and, you know, but on the substance, you know, I tend to agree, we need, we have, I agree, we have an affordable housing crisis. We need to do more. And for me, I tend to agree with what everyone has said because we do need the growth, we do need to maintain revenue. But one thing about the 40B process is it removes some of our leverage in exactly that question. So, you know, I agree, we need these projects, we need more affordable housing, but 40B gives us less power to negotiate with the developers. So if we can do these projects in a different way, that's always something I'm in favor of. Obviously, these applications are in, it's comprehensive permit, it's 40B, so the cart's kind of left the barn on these projects. But going forward, you know, we have more leverage to negotiate better agreements and bring more revenue in and meet community needs if we're doing this, these projects outside of 40B. So that's just my, my view on it.
Thank you, Council appears. Any other questions or comments from the council? Vice President Carviallo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, Council Marks is right and Council Knight is right. If we're going to fight, we're not going to have any leverage with these people that are coming. So I say, you know, the administration sit down, negotiate with them, maybe we, maybe we can collect some taxes a little before the time is due. Again, right now, there's a, there's a lot of options that are on the table and they say, if we're going to fight everything, then we'll have no leverage ever doing anything. So I hope the administration is listening and sits down with these groups and hopefully we'll reach our threshold and we'll move on. But let's say, again, we have very few avenues for affordable housing in this area.
Thank you, Vice President Carviallo. Any other questions from the council? Okay, any other questions from the public? Any? Yep.
Hi there. William Navar, 108 Medford Street, apartment 1B. And I just think this is another great opportunity for me to talk about the two issues I talk about almost every time. And that is that we could get more housing if we repeal the parking minimums, first of all, because right now what we're doing is we're mandating that a large portion of our city needs to be parking lots. And those don't pay much taxes and they don't create much value. One way you could tell they're not creating value is if they're empty, which they often The other thing is the land value taxation. We're talking about we're going to develop and that's going to bring in more revenue. We say this development will be good. There'll be more housing for our residents, maybe more jobs for our residents. And in the same breath, we say, this will be good because it'll bring in revenue because we'll basically assess a fine on that good thing they did. Well, I gotta say, why is the person who owns land that's not being used very well paying that same amount? You have land in the city of Medford that's not really being used for very much. It's not being used for housing. It's being used for parking lots that are half-used near Wellington Circle, for example. Very expensive land near an orange line station. You think how many people in this country would love to have such good access to transit? There's a parking lot there. I didn't write a script, so that's kind of the reason I'm rambling a bit. But, but, but my basic point is that it's not smart. It's obviously not your thing. This is the way taxation has been done for, since before the United States was founded. But it's not wise to, 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 to hope that people do good things for your city and then tax them when they do those good things, like provide housing and reduce their taxes when they do bad things. When you put in blight, you get a discount on your taxes. When you put in a nice building, your taxes go up. We only have so much land. And if somebody wants to put in some blight and reduce the tax base, that doesn't seem like a very sustainable system.
What information, Mr. President?
Information, Vice President Carviallo.
To the, to the, to Mr. Navar question, we're not reducing the tax base, we're increasing the tax base. So, I mean, the property on 4,000 Mystic Valley Parkway, when that building is up, we'll be paying close to $1 million a year in taxes. We're not collecting nearly that amount from that property right now. And I don't know what the other, you know, what the value of the other properties are, but I know we won't be collecting that, that type of funding from the building that's there. But I say, but, you know, when a full-fledged building is up there, that number, that number's going to be close to $1 million, similar to Modera, which pays like a million, a million three in taxes.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think the 40B program's good, under the existing taxation scheme, be a great thing because you will get something built and they'll pay taxes on it. I think that, we sometimes talk about the free market as if it's an evil thing and that's, that's because we, that's because, that's because of, there's various, there's good reasons for that. But if you had a taxation scheme, I think, where you don't tax the buildings and you only tax the land, people who are under utilizing the land would be a lot more tempted to build something productive on it, something that's a blessing to the community, something that provides housing. You get it, what do you say when you want to run for office? You say, I want to provide more housing and I'm going to provide more jobs. And then you get in and you, everybody's done this again, past 400 years. You get in and what do you say? Well, we're going to have taxes on housing and jobs. Well, it seems to me that it's working backwards because you get what, you get less of what you tax. And that's the way we do it in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's what we do in, in, in at least, depending on how you count, 47 out of the 50 states. That's how we do it in most countries in the world, but I think it's silly and, and we should, we should do it better.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions?
Move the question.
Yeah, I believe Council of Beers, you had your hand up. Council Beers.
Just that, you know, I tend to agree with Mr. Navar that our tax code is ridiculous and there's a lot of ways we could make it better. And I hope that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts gives us the power to do it.
Thank you, Council of Beers. On the motion of Vice President Carviallo seconded by.
Second.
Second by Counsel Scott Pelley. Clark Curbey, please call the roll.
As amended by Counselor Knight, I believe.
Yes, as amended by Counselor Knight. My apologies.
Counsel Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Carviallo.
Yes.
Counselor Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Morell.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero and the negative, the motion passes. Two zero dash three nine four offered by Council Knight, be it resolved that the Medford City Council publishes schedule of pre-budget and regular budget meetings for the purpose of establishing the fiscal year 21 city budget. Council Knight.
What do you think, Johnny?
Sounds good to me. I, to give you an update, I, so we received a memo from the mayor on, I believe it was Friday, saying that she was going to present the budget to us on the 16th, Tuesday, the 16th. I called the chief of staff to ask him when we would be receiving our budget books. Did not have a definitive answer for me. He said, things are still in flux. So he was thinking that we would probably get them the 15th to the 16th, which I thought was really tight because I, you know, we need, my eyes, we need some time to review the budget, especially before the mayor's going to be presenting the budget. So.
We're not going to vote on it that night?
We're not voting on it that night, no.
We're not going to vote on it that night.
But still, I would like, I know myself, I like my budget book, you know, in advance so we can ask some good questions. But, so I'm going to touch base with him next week about this very issue that you're asking me about. And we could probably even talk about it maybe on Thursday night when we meet regarding the budget with Tony Roselli and members of the city's finance team. So.
Motion table till next week, Mr. President. Motion table till next week. You're going to have some more information, then we'll be able to set up a schedule. It's fine.
Sounds good. Perfect. On the motion of Council Knight to table.
Second.
Second by Vice President Carviallo. Clark Curbey, please call the roll.
This is the table until next week, so I'll leave it, I'll put it back on the agenda.
Thank you.
Counsel Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Carviallo.
Yes.
Counsel Knight.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Morell.
Yes.
Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seventy affirmative, zero and the negative, the motion passes. E and B paper has been tabled. Two zero dash three nine five offered by Council of Beers and Council of Morell. Whereas many food pickup and delivery apps and websites charge exorbitant fees and commissions that hurt our local restaurants and whereas these fees may endanger the ability of local restaurants to survive this economic crisis, now therefore be it resolved that the Medford City Council expresses its support for HD 5054 and act relative to restaurant delivery commissions during the COVID-19 state of emergency. Be it further resolved, the city clerk forward a copy of this resolution to the Medford Legislative Delegation as well as House Speaker DeLio, Senate President Spilka, and Governor Baker. Council of Beers or Council of Morell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll take this one first. And, you know, when the app, when Web 2.0 and apps and all of that stuff started coming and said, you know, we're going to get rid of the middleman between you and everything and else. And in reality, what it's done is it's actually created middlemen and Grubhub and Uber Eats and DoorDash are the perfect example. 15 years ago, you want a pizza delivered, you called the restaurant, they delivered your pizza. Now you're paying an app 30% to get that pizza. So, you know, it's kind of ridiculous. I think we need to do something to rein it in. It's especially tough right now when you have all takeout or delivery, you don't have the in-service dining, demand is so down for restaurants. So that's the intent of putting this. So that's the intent of putting this forward. I spoke to Representative Donato over the weekend and he said that the House has put this into a bill for statewide. So what this bill would have done is let us locals, communities decide on this. The House has actually said, "We're going to cap it at 15% statewide." So they are moving that bill forward. It hasn't moved through the Senate yet, so I think it's still worth us sending, sending this resolution up in support of this concept. But I am encouraged that the State House is planning to do a statewide bill capping these fees at 15%, which should really help out the restaurants who have been, in a sense, getting exploited by these apps.
Thank you, Counselor Beers, Counselor Morell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, Counselor Beers really said it all, but this is just to help our local restaurants that are struggling to survive right now. And as the resolution says, this is, can really be the difference between life or death for these local businesses. And the way some of these third-party apps work, sometimes businesses, restaurants actually lose money on individual orders because of the way the rate fee is structured. And these are restaurants, a lot of them that do have, you know, you call their phone number, you can put in an order, but people are just so dependent on apps, used to doing everything on their phone. So as Counselor Beers said, this middleman gets involved and it's really at the detriment of our local businesses. So I think this is just something that I ask our counselors to show support for our local restaurants. And again, to this concept, as it is kind of like many things in this time, it's moving and it's shifting and our legislators are taking it up. But just to express the support for our local businesses and the movement of this at the state level.
Thank you, Counselor Morell. Counselor Knight?
Uh, Mr. President, thank you very much. Again, you know, thank you, Counselor Beers and Counselor Morell for looking into this. I too had a conversation with Representative Donato just about this very same issue. And I'm so glad to see that the representatives are focused on making sure that the businesses on our main streets can survive, because that's what it's about. It's about our downtowns, it's about main streets, Mr. President. And, um, you know, these third-party apps don't do anything but actually take away from the profits of these businesses that are investing in our community. You know, when we sit down and we have a community event, the first people to step up are Phoebe Scoops, Amici's Pizza, um, you know, Razzo's Pizza, places like that. The minute that anybody picks up the phone and calls, there's other people running there to give us donations. I mean, God, Marty Murphy, when Marty Murphy was in business, he's given, I think he gave away more food than he sold. Um, and these third-party apps, Mr. President, they really take away from that intimacy, number one, in the community. But number two, they're taking away from the hard-earned, the hard-earned spoils that should go to these businesses that have been so committed to making sure that our community is doing well. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd like to put a B paper forward, requesting that our Chamber of Commerce investigate maybe a Medford app that chronicles all the food in the community that does delivery services and maybe provides an online platform for them to be able to have people order through. That'll cut out the middleman. So that's just a suggestion, Mr. President, that maybe our Chamber of Commerce can take a look at. But I certainly thank my council colleagues for bringing this resolution forward and I support it wholeheartedly. And I'd also like to thank Representative Donato once again for his leadership delivering from Main Street and Medford.
Thank you, Counselor Knight. Clerk of Attorney, do you have the wording of the B paper?
I've got it, yes. Do you want to read it back or are we good? Either way.
No, I just want to make sure, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Any other questions, any other questions from the council? Oh, yes, Counselor Marks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this up. It's my understanding that this would only apply during the COVID emergency and once that's lifted, this would no longer apply. So I just want to make sure that's on record and my colleagues are aware of that. And secondly, Mr. President, what actually troubles me more than the exorbitant fees that they're charging, to be quite honest with you, is the fact that many of these small business owners have opted to offer discounts if you call them directly. And because Grubhub and DoorDash and Uber Eats has such a market power that they're able to prevent the restaurants from offering their own incentive for people to call them directly and, you know, at a discount. So they really have cornered the market, Mr. President, especially now with COVID and the need for delivery and so forth. And I think anything we can do to help the small business at least get through this timeframe, I think is warranted. So I will support this tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Marks, Counselor Beers?
Yeah, and to Counselor Marks's point, I think it's good to have this for the emergency, but we should maybe try to take this up again after and see if the Commonwealth might give the municipalities some authority here to really look at this because Counselor Marks is right. You know, we're just sending millions of dollars a year out of the community through these apps down to Wall Street and Silicon Valley. So they don't need it, we need it.
Thank you, Counselor Beers. Okay, any other questions or comments regarding this from the council? Okay, Mr. Navar?
I just wanted to say, I support this and, and, uh, I really think that if I, if I had my way, and I think the, I think most of the counselors would agree because Counselor Marks was going in this direction, I'd say there should just be no hidden fees. Customers should pay the fee unless the restaurant opts into something else. That's, you know, and then there's no cap. They could charge a million bucks if you want, and the customer has to pay it. There you go. And that's what I would do. And I think that, I'd love to see that be sort of a demand because, you know, sometimes I think Beacon Hill, they like to do these little tweaks and stuff, but if you do this, you don't ever have to tweak it again. It'll just take care of itself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Navar. Okay, uh, let's see, we have, um, okay, it seems like there's no other questions. So on the B paper offered by Counselor Knight, seconded by?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Vice President Caviolo, Clerk of Attorney, please call the roll. Clerk of Attorney, you're muted, one minute.
On the B paper, Counselor Beers?
Yes.
Vice President Caviolo?
Yes.
Counselor Knight?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Morell?
Yes.
Counselor Scappelli?
Yes.
President Falco?
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative, the motion passes. On the main motion offered by Counselor Beers and Counselor Morell, and seconded by?
Second, Mr. President.
Vice President Caviolo, Clerk of Attorney, please call the roll.
Counselor Beers?
Yes.
Vice President Caviolo?
Yes.
Counselor Knight?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Morell?
Yes.
Counselor Scappelli?
Yes.
President Falco?
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative, the motion passes. 20-396 offered by Counselor Beers. Be it resolved that the Memphis City Council requests that the city administration take any action possible to ensure that nonprofit daycare and social service organizations have access to small business relief funds being administered or advertised by the city of Medford, Counselor Beers?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think, I mean, the effects of this economic crisis and the pandemic are, you know, who knows what they're all going to be? But one of them has been already a real decimation of the childcare industry and our daycare industry. And it's really worrying for trying to go back to, you know, new normal or whatever you want to call it. When schools are open, people are back and working. We have a childcare industry that's in the state that it's in. I think we all received a message from some folks who are worried about their own daycare in this city. They've only been able to access some of the government programs and a significant portion of the funds, especially some of the funds that are coming down to municipalities, are not able to go to nonprofit organizations. So this resolution, one, I know that Tufts has a fund for nonprofits. They're issuing one-time $1,000 grants. A thousand dollars is not going to get a daycare very far in terms of payroll and rent and all the things that come with it. So whatever possible, I've spoken with some folks in the administration and I understand that the law is difficult. But whatever we can do to provide some assistance to our daycares and social service organizations that are really struggling right now, I think the city administration should, should look into that, you know, with extra, extra attention.
Thank you, Counselor Beers, Vice President Caviolo?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I thank Counselor Beers for bringing this up. Being on the committee on the, that's working of this, there have been some daycares that have applied for the funding for this. There is, I don't think there are any nonprofits, but most of the small businesses in the, uh, that have been affected have applied. The problem that we've seen already is we have more applicants than we have funds already. And if everybody takes the $10,000 that's out there, unless there's a second round of funding, we, you know, they're going to have to say no to some people. But I want to, Counselor Beers, though, there were some daycare centers that were on there. They have applied for the funding.
Thank you, Vice President Caviolo. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Second.
Okay. Any, on the motion of Counselor Beers, seconded by Counselor Knight, Clerk of Attorney, please call the roll.
Counselor Beers?
Yes.
Vice President Caviolo?
Yes.
Counselor Knight?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Morell?
Yes.
Counselor Scappelli?
Yes.
President Falco?
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative, the motion passes. 20-397 offered by Counselor Morell. Be it resolved that the Memphis City Council hold a moment of silence for more, uh, hold a moment of silence for the more than 100,000 Americans we have lost to coronavirus to mark the June 1st National Day of Mourning in Lament. Counselor Morell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I had several community members reach out to me, and I'm sure my fellow counselors, about this Day of Mourning, that was actually yesterday, to mark the terrible loss of more than 100,000 Ameri, I'm sorry, 100,000 Americans. So losses that have likely touched every single one of us through our friends, our family, our colleagues, and our community members. It's worth noting that the coronavirus has been particularly deadly to already marginalized members of our communities, the elderly in care homes, communities in color, communities of color, sorry, those living in poverty. And I just think we must take the time, as we have in previous meetings, to mourn those that we've lost and to make a promise to ourselves to do better by those communities that are facing disproportionate impacts of this virus. And this is...
Counselor Morell? Counselor Morell?
Is that results from it? I can see George moving.
We lost you, we lost you for about maybe 15 seconds, sorry.
Okay, figures. But as, so as I was saying, I'll pick up somewhere in the middle, but the... Are you guys frozen again? Okay.
No, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, everyone stop, sorry. So the coronavirus has been particularly deadly to already marginalized members of our community, elderly in care homes, communities of color, those living in poverty. And I just ask that we take a moment, as we have a few weeks in a row, but now the cumulative number of those lost, just to mourn those that have been lost and especially make a promise to ourselves to do better by those communities that are facing disproportionate impacts of this disease because they have to be in the front lines, because they live in crowded housing, because they live in polluted neighborhoods. And I do have, I do know we have at least one community member here that wants to speak after any counselor members want to add anything. So I thank you all for considering this.
Thank you, Counselor Morell, Counselor Beers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, the scope of this tragedy and the impact on the Medford community and our entire country, I don't think we're, I don't think it's set in yet. We've lost 100,000 people across the country. We've lost over 100 people just in nursing homes here in Medford. And I think Counselor Morell's point, especially about who's been impacted and the communities that have been hit hardest, you know, this has been a difficult couple months and then the difficult couple weeks too. And, you know, communities of color, low-income communities, environmental justice communities that have really been hurt by the coronavirus crisis are now also, you know, facing the emotional hurt and the, and the real pain of these protests and the protests against the murders of black men. So I think this is a time of mourning and, uh, I just, it's hard for me to even put into words what we're going through as a nation right now. And I'm just glad that we, residents and people are taking the time to mourn. And I think we're going to have to talk about it more and more over the next few months and years.
Thank you, Counselor Beers. Any other comments from the council? Okay, Counselor Morell, you mentioned that someone wanted to speak on this?
Yeah, I think Judy is, uh, in the audience. She's out about this.
Yes, Judy Telbeck. I am a retired chaplain and as Counselor Beers said, sometimes these losses are hard to put into words and I'm conscious of how important ritual is for helping us all to cope with grief and loss. So I appreciate the council's receptivity, especially Counselor Beers and Counselor Morell, for offering this opportunity as a community for us to remember who and what we've lost and to have some opportunity for community grieving. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the, so at this point in time, why don't we all, at this point in time, why don't we all rise for a brief moment of silence?
Uh, Mr. President, somebody else wants to speak, I believe.
Oh, okay, well, wait, I apologize. Let's see.
Jeff Sparrow had her hand raised.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Try not to mute her.
Oh, hi, I am sorry, I didn't have anything to say. I was just expressing my, like, agreement with other things that were happening. I just did a thumbs up on Zoom. I didn't mean to signal my intent to speak. Sorry about that, y'all.
No, no worries. Okay, at this point, would anybody else like to speak on this? Okay, seeing and hearing now, why don't we all rise for a brief moment of silence? Thank you. On the motion of Counselor Morell, seconded by Counselor Knight, Clerk of Attorney, please call the roll.
Counselor Beers?
Yes.
Vice President Caviolo?
Yes.
Counselor Knight?
Yes.
Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Morell?
Yes.
Counselor Scappelli?
Yes.
President Falco?
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative, the motion passes. Reports to committees, 19-287, May 26, 2020. Committee, the whole report, let's see. Purpose of the meeting was to discuss the scope of services for the proposed zoning consultants work on recultivation. We did, we had that meeting, let's see, May 26th. It was a good exchange. We talked about the scope of services with the zoning, regarding the zoning consultant. And, um, let's see, uh, we talked a little bit about the funding. Counselor Knight moved to get a formal response from the administration on whether the money has been approved and what account it exists. That passed in a roll call vote, seven, nothing. And we talked a little bit about that earlier tonight. But on the motion of Vice President Caviolo to approve the committee report, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Marks, Clerk of Attorney, please come roll.
Counselor Beers?
Yes.
Vice President Caviolo?
Yes.
Counselor Knight? Counselor Knight? We'll skip Counselor Knight, Counselor Marks?
Yes.
Counselor Morell?
Yes.
Counselor Scappelli?
Yes.
President Falco?
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if Counselor Knight's got his connection back?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I thought I was unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Seven affirmative, zero negative. The committee report passes. 19-659 and 20-042, May 27, 2020. Committee, the whole report to follow. We met, let's see, last Wednesday, the 27th at 6:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to review and discuss the proposed marijuana ordinance. Let's see, we talked about the previous work that we have worked on in the previous meetings. And we, uh, let's see, we, uh, Mr. Silverstein from KP Law highlighted items that still needed to be addressed. We discussed those items and we basically reconvened tonight to talk about the zoning maps. But we discussed a little bit about the zoning maps last week as well. See, on the motion to approve the committee report.
Make the motion, Mr. President.
Vice President Falco, seconded by Counsel Marx.
No, Mr. President, if I could.
Oh, yes.
Mr. President, you know, this has been a long process, you know, and I think we're all proud, I think I speak for everyone, of the end results of many, many months and years of
Years.
hard work. And I want to personally thank where this all started, which was the zoning subcommittee. And it was led by Vice President Caviello with members Scarpelli and Knight. They did yeoman's work, put together a document that was really complex and a lot of moving parts. And I think we came out with a document that, you know, fits this city. This is not a cookie-cutted document. This is unique to the city of Medford and how it applies. And I think it works well within our community. It allows establishments to come in. It allows them to flourish, and it also addresses the will of the general public, which voted a majority to allow marijuana shops within the city of Medford. So I want to thank your leadership, Mr. President. I know this got a little contentious with some of the issues. You kept us on path. And I think we came out with a document that really, I feel very comfortable with. And I just want to thank my colleagues.
Counsel Marx, if we could thank President Falco, he was on the committee, I think, for the first two years.
Yeah, this zoning committee's had a number of reiterations for the whole process. But Counsel Marx, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And then thank you, everyone. This really has been a team effort. And, you know, it's, but I really feel like we kind of really vetted everything and looked at everything. And I feel like the, you know, the finished product is going to be something that's really good. So I think, you know, we went through all the, like, you mentioned earlier, Vice President Caviello, it's been years. And I think a lot of input went into it and a lot of time and effort and energy, and they thank everyone for their hard work on this. So on the vote for the committee report, on the motion of Vice President Caviello, seconded by. Second. Counsel Marx, Clerk Curtis, please call the roll.
Counsel Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Counsel Knight.
Yes.
Counsel Marx.
Yes.
Counsel Morell.
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative. The motion passes. Let's see, public participation, anybody? Anybody want to speak or need to speak or? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Records.
Records. The records, the meeting of May twenty sixth. Excuse me?
Sorry, I said my favorite part.
No. Records of the meeting of May twenty sixth, two thousand twenty were passed to Vice President Caviello. Vice President Caviello, how did you find those records?
Thank you, Mr. President. After an exhausting review of the records, I find them in admirable condition. Motion for approval.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Vice President Caviello. On that motion, seconded by Council Knight, Clerk Curtis, please call the roll.
Counsel Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Counsel Knight.
Yes.
Counsel Marx.
Yes.
Counsel Morell.
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes, seven affirmative, zero negative. The motion passes and the records are approved. Then the motion of Council Knight to adjourn the meeting, seconded by.
Say again, Mr. President.
Seconded by Council of Bears. Counsel Marx.
Yes, before you call the roll.
Yes.
Before you call the roll, we have a very important meeting this Thursday, and maybe you
You are correct.
reiterate that to the general public regarding the financial situation of our community. And we'll be meeting with our outside auditor. Maybe you want to let the general public know that.
Yes. So we have a meeting coming up this June fourth at five thirty P M. That meeting is with, let's see, it's with Tony Roselli. He is the outside consultant. We're going to have, the people that have been invited were, Mayor Lango Curran's been invited, Dave Rodriguez is Chief of Staff, Superintendent Dr. Maurice Edwina Vincent, Assistant Superintendent Christine Patterson, Chief of Procurement, Shab Khan, Finance Director and Auditor Alicia Numley Benjamin, and the Audit Consultant Tony Roselli. The purpose of the meeting is to receive an update from the administration regarding the fiscal year two thousand twenty city budget, fiscal year two thousand twenty one city budget, to get an update with regard to receipts for taxes and to talk about pretty much any type of financial issue with regard to the budget. It's going to be a difficult budget upcoming. And we will have a, hopefully, a pretty good discussion this Thursday, five thirty P M.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Marx, Counsel of Bears.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to the clerk, just FYI that on the city website, if you go to the upcoming meetings link for this meeting, it says seven P M. on the website, not five thirty P M. The agenda, when you click the PDF, is correct, but the website itself says seven P M. So we might just want to try to see if they can change that. We don't want people.
I'll reach out to, I'll reach out and take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Curtis. Thank you, Counsel of Bears for mentioning that. Okay, on the motion to adjourn by Counselor, I believe it was Counsel Knight, seconded by.
Second.
Vice President Caviello, Clerk Curtis, please call the roll.
Counsel Bears.
Yes.
Vice President Caviello.
Yes.
Counsel Knight. Counsel Knight, you still there?
He's gone.
Counsel Marx.
Yes.
Oh, but I forgot.
Oh, he's there. All right, we got a yes from Counsel Marx and a yes from Counsel Knight. Counsel Morell.
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
President Falco.
Yes. Seven, seven affirmative, zero negative. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night. Good night.